Glad to welcome anybody who wants to be an audience to come forward and have a seat.
We always proceed our council meeting with a word of prayer and the pledge of allegiance. I will ask Audubon Sheila Isby to lead us in prayer.
If you'll bow with me. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the abundance blessings that you've given us. We just ask, Lord, that we ever continue to praise you for the blessings that you've given us and to be mindful of this city that you have greatly blessed us with. We ask, Lord, that everything that we say and do be pleasing in your sight, for we pray, Lord, that you get the glory in all that we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this meeting to order. Mr. Garrett, please call the roll.
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grum?
Here.
Mr. Pruitt?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
You should have received copies of the minutes of the September 27th, 2016 meeting. Is there any additions, corrections?
Make a motion for approval as submitted.
Motion and second for approval as submitted. Any discussion? If there is no discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero. Next up is report of our standing committees, and I will turn this section of the agenda over to Mr. Hawkins.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. And we will start with some resolutions requesting the Faulkner County Tax Collector put some liens on properties as a result of incurred expenses by the city. We had, we started with four, actually, we started with five, and two of those have come in and paid. One paid on Friday, one paid on Monday, so we're down to, we're down to three, so that's a good thing. The first one is at 2116 Prince Street. Is there an owner or representative of an owner of the property at 2116 Prince Street in attendance this evening? I don't think this is gonna take long to look around because there are not many people here, Mr. Mayor. We have a resolution to be read for this. It's Resolution R-16.
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption. Discussion? If no discussion, all in favor of placing a lien on the property existing at 2116 Prince Street for, to pay the city back for correcting the conditions that existed at that property in the amount of $163.64, all in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Second piece of property, Mr. Mayor, is located at number four Gwen, G-W-E-N Lane, four Gwen Lane. Is there an owner or representative of an owner from that particular piece of property? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone jumping to the front. We have a resolution. It's Resolution R-1642.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption. Discussion? If there is no discussion, all in favor of placing, passing this resolution to place a lien on the property at four Gwen Lane to pay the city back for correcting the conditions that existed at that property in the amount of $180.44, all in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Final piece of property, Mr. Mayor, is at 516 First Avenue. Is there a representative or an owner of property at 516 First Avenue with us this evening?
Seeing no one, Mr. Hawkins?
Mr. Mayor, this is Resolution R-1643.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption. Discussion? There is no discussion. All in favor of this resolution placing a lien against the property at 516 First Avenue to repay the city for conditions it has corrected at that property address in the amount of $180.44, all in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
The other properties, the one listed at Robbins Street and one that was supposed to be listed last week on Highway 65 have been paid, as we stated earlier. Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve the bid for Seaborn Morgan Half Road Improvements for the Community Development Department, and, Mr. Grummer, your name is on here. Would you like to come up and talk about that?
Thank you. Sorry, I was on my phone. So we're talking about Seaborn Morgan Half Road Improvement, correct? Yes. Pays to pay attention. So basically, this is an ongoing project that was prior years working through the city council for half-road improvement of Seaborn Morgan. Specifically, a sidewalk that will run on the south side of Seaborn Morgan from Ingram all the way up to Harkrider, creating a pedestrian pathway, because there's no pathways and people tend to walk close to the road, as well as on the blocks of, between Hamilton over to Lincoln, having culverts put in for a half-road improvements on Seaborn Morgan to provide on-street parking as part of a memorandum of understanding that the city council went through last year as part of the negotiations with the Ackland family and the redevelopment of the block that coordinates with the cottage project that we have. So we have procured and contractor has been approved, or I say approved, it's contractor, lowest bidder, has actually come in under budget approximately twenty, it's around close to $30,000 under budget, which was good. So we're looking forward to moving forward on this, and this will coordinate with our half-block development to the south.
I make a motion, we bid, we approve this bid.
Second.
Motion and second to approve this bid, and we think it's a good bid. We also have another contractor that was right in there, nip and tuck with this bid, so.
Say it again.
The other contractor, the second-place contractor, finished right about $2,000 or so slightly over this one, so we think it's a good bid. I think it's right in the ballpark, so we feel good about it.
Do we know anything about?
That's what I was gonna say. Have we done business with that one?
Have we done business with this?
Actually, this contractor put in and won the bid for the site grading for the cottage project, and he's also installed the alleyway, which has been completed, so we've had good success with him.
I don't even know, I gotta, well, I'm not even gonna talk about that. I got a problem with somebody.
I have been mentioning it long time.
Never mind, forget it. Okay, that's fine.
What's the shelf life on that, Mr. Grummer?
Never.
So it's only a half-life, then, in other words, okay.
That's why it's a half-road improvement.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. That's a good point, Mr. Hawkins.
Thought I'd throw that in.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve this, award this bid to Craig Custom Construction for $361,272. Any other discussion? No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to bid the 2016 and 2017 overlay projects for the Street and Engineering Department, and, Mr. Vincent, would you care to come forward and tell us about this? And while you are on your way, I would like to say thank you for some work that's been done here in the last week or so on college between Salem and Country Club. It is a project that Ward Two and, or Ward One and Ward Three split the cost on in our money from this year, so it's been, it's.
It's looking good.
Hadn't been striped, but other than that, it's sure is riding pretty.
Striping should happen hopefully within a few weeks.
Thank you very much.
And I am very happy that's done.
Yes, sir. Me too.
We had a, we had a few phone calls about that one.
But I think it's fair to say that that particular project highlighted a problem we had that's, that's generated this solution that you see before us tonight. So, Mr. Vincent?
That is correct. Organizing the contractors, two separate contractors to do both the paving and the overlay work was difficult. It was worth it, but it was difficult. That's why it was able to have, we were able to do it so fast. It would have taken our crew probably two weeks or more to do the milling ourselves, mostly because we just don't have nearly the, the equipment that a contractor has. We have a little four-foot-wide milling machine with a few horsepower, and they came in with a tractor that's eight feet wide. Yeah, and they knocked it out pretty quick.
Yeah, yeah.
My superintendent has suggested that we continue that process. They can do it so much faster that it's not really, doesn't really cost us a lot more money to bid that out to a contractor than it does to do it ourselves. But if we are gonna bid it out, what we presumed was that the contractor that does the overlay would be the low quota to do the milling, but that didn't prove to be the case, which is why the scheduling was such a nightmare. So what I would propose is that for the majority of the overlay projects that we have scheduled for this year, that we wait till next year and bid all of the 2016 and 2017 projects at the same time.
Early next year.
Yes, early next year, as soon as they're chosen. But I can't guarantee that the work will be done early next year, but we'll go ahead and bid it and allow the contractors to do it as soon as they're able. The advantage is that with lumping all those projects together, we'll get a better price, I think, than we would if we shoehorned it into the remainder of the year. And there's not a lot of time left this year anyway. We've been so busy with Central Landing and Smith and Spital Street and other things that this, it's been until now that we've had time to even really think about it.
And to be honest with you, our contractors are also doing these other things, too, so getting them to, to focus on.
That's correct.
Just among the other big projects that are working on together, it's been tough, and these, these are considered smaller projects, so by lumping them together, the aggregation allows it to be a bigger project and more worthy of their immediate focus, so that's good. But also, the fact that they can coordinate and more closely time the milling and the placement of the resurfacing means that we can get in and get out quicker instead of leaving the, leaving us on the project doing the milling, which is gonna take much longer and disrupt traffic longer. And we disrupt traffic in a shorter period of time by getting all of a project done quickly, and then we can move on to the next street on the list and get that done. So we make it more attractive for the contractor and make it a safer experience for the driver, not having to divert or go around working crews, so.
Oh, I was gonna ask one thing, feeling, the milling on that, the whole street was taken up. Is that gonna be typical of these other projects, or will it?
Not necessarily. We make that judgment call based on how many times it's been, every time we overlay a street, the slope gets a lot higher since we mill the edge. The first time, at least, we mill the edge and not the center, so the slope goes up. Eventually, you can only do that a couple of times before you have to mill the whole thing. And then in addition, if they're, like in the case of college, I can't remember if we overlaid that whole thing because of that reason, or sometimes we choose to overlay the whole thing because there's enough, enough cracks already in the surface from, a lot of times it's from street cuts or maybe other things that we think it's, it warrants milling the whole thing, so you don't get a lot of reflection cracking. I think most of the other ones were gonna be, at least the ones that are, that are scheduled for this year will just be edge milling. Now, what we do next year, I don't know, but it, it, we do it both ways, depending on the street.
I will say on that college project, part of the reason for the overlay was, this dates to your very first, I think you and David's very first year on the council, when we put in the, the Sherman Heights project, we required them to widen the street three feet, and that seam finally just completely deteriorated. So we had to go back and overlay the whole thing.
I've heard some good comments about it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts on that? I'll just take a motion to approve that, that.
I moved.
Second.
Process for the overlay projects. Motion and second to lump the 2016, and once they're selected, and we move right into that, so we can get it, get it bid early in 17, the 2017 projects and couple the asphalt overlay and the, and the milling into the same bid package. Give a motion and second. Any other discussion? No other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Vincent. Next item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing a five-year extension of the interlocal agreement for ambulance services that's provided by MEMS, and Mr. John Swanson is with us this evening, and, Mr. Swanson, as you make your way forward, I'd just like to say thank you for the service that you provide in our community, because in, in my work, I'm, I do some work with and around Conway Regional, and I hear nothing but good things about your organization, and I just wanted to say that.
Well, I appreciate that very much, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. You're, we really feel privileged to be here, our partnership with police and fire departments, and your public safety response, and certainly take that responsibility seriously, and, but I appreciate your kind words. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
By way of report, just to give you an update about, very briefly, what we're doing at MEMS, I've distributed a paper copies of a handout. There are additional copies back here for the members of the community who might want to have one. But just to remind those that are not familiar with MEMS, we are a public agency, city of Little Rock, operating as a public nonprofit, and over the course of years have expanded through interlocal agreements, such as the one in Conway, to serve about 2,100 square miles of central Arkansas, 530,000 residents, about one-sixth of the state's population, transporting now about 190 people a day, so it's a busy place. Our representative from Conway is County Chief Jared Gibson, who's here tonight. We've been in the city of Conway through the interlocal agreement since 2004. We continue with the coverage that you're familiar with, but because of the increased volume, which you'll see in a second, we have added an additional ambulance, a BLS unit, meaning no paramedic, but that unit's mission here is to handle the transfer load between nursing homes and hospitals for bed-bound patients so as to free up the paramedic units for their 911 responsibilities, so that unit has been an added resource. In addition, we continue to have the interlocal agreement with the county, so that provides two additional ambulances in Faulkner County, one near Greenbrier and the other Liberty Volunteer Fire Station. Next slide will show you that we continue to meet our response time commitments. What's called the fractile is that we are on scene 90% of the time in under nine minutes. That has actually improved slightly last year to about 92%. But you'll see over the course of time that since 2005, the first full year we were here, to last year, our call volume has nearly doubled, and the good news there is that that helps to generate the revenue. That means for the third year, we will not need to ask you for a subsidy, so we're, I'm sure, as you are pleased with that. I do want to mention a couple of projects or important initiatives that MEMS is doing. We've recently changed our cardiac arrest protocol. We now stay on scene as long as 30 minutes before transporting certain cardiac arrest patients. The science and experience from around the country has taught us that we will have better chance for a good outcome if we do that, and what has become the biggest variable in it is quality CPR that is begun immediately. And so our ROSC, return of spontaneous circulation, means that we're able to get some kind of a heartbeat back on scene. Before we changed the protocol, we were at about 16% success. Since the protocol, it's 37%, but it has plateaued. And in order to move that further is to engage the community and like the partnership with your firefighters to help us educate and get people willing to do CPR on scene. That has been now the biggest variable in good outcomes. And so that's a program that we're offering for free. We'll come to the site of the church groups, businesses, schools, in groups of 10 to 30 is preferred. It's about a two, two-and-a-half hour class. There is no charge. It is a abbreviated course. It is CPR and AED refresher, if you will. You don't get the CPR card for this, but you do learn how to save a life. The other thing that MEMS is doing that is a huge issue for us is we look around the country and see the experiences of the active shooters, be it in a school, shopping malls, and theaters, is what lessons can we learn and extract from that and apply should that tragedy occur in central Arkansas? So we've invested a lot of energy in preparing ourselves, partnering with police and the fire departments, so as to be able to get to people sooner. The history, the lessons learned from around the country tells us that people have bled to death from survivable injuries because the first responders can't get to them quickly enough, and so that has been our focus. And I will tell you tonight, the school asked that it not be widely publicized, so I won't tell you where this is happening, but right now MEMS is leading a school exercise with 25 simulated shooting victims in a, in one of the local, in an area school, just to, again, push the envelope, to help us. us all be better prepared to respond to these kinds of situations. Our star team, Special Taxes Advanced Response, we have paramedics at MEMS who are actually reserve deputies with the Faulkner County Sheriff's Department. And we have recently received a unique distinction. I understand we're the first agency in the country that the FBI has actually designated officially as a task force, and we're Task Force Witch Doctor, but that is our MEMS star team. That relationship with the FBI, we've already for the last several years been the FBI's SWAT medics all over the state, but we've recently received that particular designation. But with the LEAFER program, training police officers how to use tourniquets and blood clotting bandages and chest seals, we've trained over 2,500 law enforcement officers in central Arkansas through the Health Department initial, providing grant dollars to give them their IFACS, their individual first aid kits. And what we've learned is that this really is initiated by the mass shooting, but police officers are saving lives today with people who have been badly cut in a car wreck, or assaulted, or gunshot victims in a, if it's fair to say, a normal shooting. That police officers have applied the tourniquets and the chest seal bandages and the blood clotting bandages, and have been credited by the medical community with saving that person's life. So it's been a very positive thing. Here in Conway, since 2015, we've trained 115 Conway police officers in how to use the tourniquets and the other tools. There've been over $6,000 in grants afforded the police department through the Health Department to give them the IFACS. And in real-world support, MEMS paramedics deploy with your police, with your training exercises about every other week. And in 2015, we deployed in 16 real-world callouts with your police. So far this year, we've deployed with 10 real-world callouts. So it is a commitment on our, that we put a big emphasis behind, and certainly the partnerships with police and fire to enhance all of our capability to meet the needs if some tragedy of that nature occur. So I'll get off the stage. Our interlocal is due for renewal, as you're all aware. We're pushing the envelope in many different ways, and again emphasizing our worst-case scenario. But again, I'm, I'm very proud of the fact that you all have chosen MEMS, and we're very pleased to be here. Do you have any questions?
Any questions to Mr. Swanson? I will state that it's been a wonderful relationship, that we have not regretted a moment of, of the experience we've had with MEMS since we, we first became a part of your system in 2004, I guess.
Yep.
So I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Does Mr. Gibson ever channel the, the, the good ghost of our, our former colleague, Sandy Brewer? At y'all's meetings?
Don't ask, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I shouldn't have gone there. I'm sorry.
I do have one question, John.
Yes, ma'am.
And this may be kinda ridiculous, but how do you determine where a patient goes to what hospital now, since we do have two?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for the question. Patient preference. We will take the patient to the hospital of their choice. If the, and to back up a little bit, we have a, a real-time communication with all of the hospitals that tell us about their capabilities and capacities. So if, for example, a hospital is normally able to do a heart procedure, we have a relationship with them that if, for some reason, they temporarily cannot do that, they immediately notify us. So if the patient might need the heart procedure, and they request to go to that hospital, we will tell them that we'll go there, but they're, we are informed that they don't have the capability right now to handle what you need. We would recommend we go to the other facility. And so we go by patient preference and then consider the capabilities. And if no patient preference has been expressed and the capability is not an issue, then we go to the closest.
Okay.
That's a very good question, so.
Yes, it is.
For that.
I'd just like to add to what Andy and the mayor said about the organization. From the get-go, it was a seamless changeover, and y'all worked well with the fire department, police department, as well as the county fire departments for, for all these years. And we certainly, certainly appreciate it.
Well, and I, I do appreciate sincerely the, the compliment, but I, I, I didn't wanna stand up here and, and accept that without acknowledging the partnership we have with police and fire, because this doesn't work without all of us together.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, John.
I make a motion. We authorize this five-year extension.
Motion and second that we authorize this five-year extension to our agreement with, with MEMS and actually the Little Rock Ambulance Authority doing business as Metropolitan Emergency Medical Services. And it would be an exclusive franchise. Any discussion? There is no discussion. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Make that R 1644.
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Thank you, Mr. Garrett. And our last item, Mr. Hawkins, I have just passed out.
I'll let you handle this, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. I will do so. A question came up. We probably jumped the gun a little bit in the placement of, this is the, this is 802 Front Street, a property that's directly across the street from the post office, the log cabin location, and across from the Simon Park in the vicinity of the caboose down the street, walking out of Mike's Place to the left in the corner. That's a drive-through structure. We probably jumped the gun at the request of the sub-leasee, which I understand is gonna be some kind of outdoor activity supplier. Maybe, you know, they're gonna have a outdoor display area where they'll display their wares after the election is over and the current occupant is gone. So they're gonna, they're gonna close off, to a degree, the, the drive-through area, and they requested extra parking through there. We went ahead and put it in. We did not check with the building owner or the original leasee, which has a long-term lease on the property. And so they just simply requested us to, to guarantee to them that when this sub-leasee is gone, if they move on to some other location, that we can restore the drive-through back to its original, original condition. So it's actually, could be active for a drive-through, that we wouldn't keep it closed off forever. And that's what this resolution attempts to do, is just to recognize that it is a historic structure with a drive-through in it that has, until this date, been, been used as a drive-through. And if it's ever needed as a drive-through again, we will take up the concrete little tire stops and remove the paint and restore it as a drive-through. That's all, all we're doing is assuring the, the leasee and owner that, that, that option is still a marketable commodity for that property. And that would be Resolution R 1645.
Make a motion for adoption, second.
Motion and second for adoption. Discussion?
Well, we put 'em down, so I would assume we would take 'em up.
And so we'll take it up?
Yeah. It's just us. We should've done our homework to start with.
Three spots in the, in their head.
Well, it's, it's on Front Street and Markham.
On both sides.
Yes, both sides, sorry. So it's probably six or seven. So, yeah, I think it's about three or four to side. Okay, motion and second. Any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero. The next item is an ordinance appropriating funds for the moving and restoration of the Springfield Desark Bridge. You'll remember that we voted last time to approve transferring the grant from the Springfield Desark Bridge, of which we had to give a 20% match to, over to Davore Drive to free it up of certain regulations that the, you know, federal government imposed on the use of those monies that we simply couldn't meet the deadline of the, the impending season, change of seasons. So we moved them over and added that money, and Metro Plan approved this too, added that grant money to the Davore Drive Bridge, which we were going to over-match. The grant money was not gonna get us to the 80% funding for the Davore Drive Bridge. It still won't moving this money over, but we're moving the grant monies from the Springfield Desark Bridge to that project and taking the money that we were gonna use on that project, a portion of it in equal amounts to the grant, and moving it to this project. So this simply recognizes that, that we're appropriating that much money out of the Parks and Recreation AMP fund balance. It's actually a little bit more, I think, than the project with, we're contracted with working bridges. So it is, but there is a component that's beyond the scope of the working bridges that deals with the ramps. So when we get a bid on that, we can more narrowly, you know, pinpoint exactly the cost. But this is an accounting ordinance that simply recognizes what we voted to do with the money last week, two weeks ago.
I make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings and bring it forward for action on tonight's agenda. All in favor of waiving the three readings and acting on this ordinance tonight? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Motion for adoption. What number is that, Mike?
115.
Thank you.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second, second.
Second motion and second for adoption. Ordinance O 16115. And of course, this will be Parks and Recreation AMP funding designated for park use, for this. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. The next item, under public safety, is an ordinance appropriating, whoops, ordinance appropriating funds for travel for the district court DWI team and acceptance of a reimbursement from the Arkansas State Police Highway Safety Grant Program. This is primarily a, this year's version of what we've done a number of years before, accepting grant monies for this, that funds travel specifically for this, this program to help make sure everybody's trained to the techniques on the, on this DWI court training. And we've done this for how many years now?
Uh, three.
Three years? So this just recognizes the grant funding and places it in our budget at the appropriate locations.
Make a motion to waive the three readings.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the three readings. All in favor of waiving the three readings? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero. We have the motion before us. Be ordinance O 16116.
Correct.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Motion and second for adoption. Discussion?
I just had a question. I see there's nobody here. Do we have any idea how many people are on this DWI team?
I, for the first couple of years, my office was part of the prosecuting team for that and assigned to DWI Court with counselors, probation officers, the judge, defense attorneys, prosecutor. I, I would say there's eight to nine people that are on the team.
Okay. Okay.
Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Very good. That passes seven to zero. Next up, our annual pre-passage of our standard property tax assessments and levies for the 2017 year. This is what we have always done. We have been doing this for years. This is not new property taxes. This is just re-establishing for this year what we did this past year. There are seven, and they all have resolutions attached to them. And the resolutions would start with Resolution R 1645, is that right?
Forty-six.
Forty-six?
Forty-six.
And proceed down to 52.
And we have to vote on each one of these separately, you said?
I think we can lump them all together, but I will have to, let me read the purpose of each one.
Okay.
Resolution R 1646 would be a voluntary levy of two-tenths of a mil on the dollar on the assessed valuation of all taxable real estate and personal property for an animal shelter for the city of Conway, not Faulkner County. That's for the city of Conway. Resolution R 1617, uh, 47 would be a voluntary four-tenths of a mil on the dollar on the assessed valuation of taxable real estate and personal property for raising purposes for the construction, equipping, operating, maintaining of public recreation, recreation and playgrounds for the city of Conway. Resolution R 1648 would be another voluntary four-tenths of a mil assessment on the valuation of taxable real estate and personal property for raising per, raising monies for operating and maintaining the cemeteries of the city of Conway. That's, that's three voluntary levies. Then you get into the mandatory levies. There's a resolution, R 1649, for the levy of four-tenths of a mil on the assessed valuation of the taxable real estate and personal property for the pension and relief fund for police officers. That's the old-school police pension fund. That's dates to people who joined it prior to 1983 or so. Is that right? Eighty-three? Eighty-three. Thank you, Mr. Elsinger. Resolution R 1650 would be another resolution, mandatory tax of four-tenths of a mil for raising revenue for the fireman's pension, just like the police pension. Both of those were voted in place in the 1960s. Resolution R 1651 was a resolution levying four-tenths of a mil on the assessed value of real estate, taxable real estate and personal property for the non-uniform employees pension fund. Again, that was levied in the 1960s by, by a public vote. And then Resolution R 1652 is a levy of three mils on the dollar for the assessed value of taxable real estate and personal property for the general fund revenues. That's the only one that's a general revenue of the city. The others are more specifically targeted. But those seven, with those amounts and destinations, and whether they're voluntary or mandatory, I would suggest that we can make a, a single motion approving Resolutions R 1646 through R 1652.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Is, Mr. Clausen, you fine with that?
I am fine with that.
And Mr. Garrett?
Good.
Any discussion? Now, I will, I will again say, these are not new. They're just a reiteration for this next year of what we did this past year, and as, as we have done for probably decades, I think. Is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, all in favor of this resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes seven to zero. I have one bit of, of just feedback I need from you real quick. A few weeks ago, we talked about the possibility of a 20-bike bike-share program. You said, go out and see what kind of sponsorships, let me take out, what kind of sponsorships we might be able to, to garner for this type of program to help offset the cost. Before we went forward with a sponsorship program and teased those potential sponsors with that possibility, we wanted to make sure that the sponsorship, the program was shaped the way you would like. We want some feedback on that. Because we were looking at a pilot program of 20 bikes, recognizing that other groups like UCA or Hendrix or CBC could come on with their own numbers of bikes, we wanted a sponsorship program that was scalable, so that if we come on with 20 and UCA comes on with 20, we wouldn't want the sponsor to automatically have to double their sponsorship. So we thought that the better way to do that is, is sell these sponsorships station by station. We've imagined our 20 bikes to be scattered in five locations of four bikes each. And so what we suggest to the council is, before we go out and seek sponsorships, is to sell sponsorship of the individual stations of four bikes each for $3,500 per station. And if you want the bikes, that's another $1,500, so a total of $5,000 in essence per station. If people don't want the bikes, then we can sell those sponsorships separately, but probably in groups of four. And they'll get logo opportunities on the station and on the bike. But if we do that and sell five stations worth, that's $25,000, the cost of the program. And we, we'd make sure that we made the sponsors know that it's a three-year commitment, so 5,000 or 3,500 per year per station, that if we do the 20 bikes, it's $36,000. This program would be designed to carve $25,000 of that and pay for that cost with sponsorships, and we'd only pick up $11,000 annual cost for the program. Is that satisfactory?
Are there only four open slots at each station?
No, we would have more than four, probably double that, so.
Okay.
And then each day, you would have to rebalance the number of bikes.
Sure, sure.
Yes, we'd have more, but the beauty of these bikes.
And that's included in the price?
That's included in the price. The beauty of these bikes is, let's say a station gets full, they have a mid-trip locking device, so you can go up to the nearest, nearest guy wire or street pole and lock it to that. So, but it's, it's better to have it locked in our station.
Sure.
So it really doesn't matter if they have a bike at this station and one at that station, but their main logos at this station, it doesn't matter.
Right.
And ultimately, I would think that the bikes would eventually co-mingle. We wouldn't necessarily keep the bikes with the same station, but they get the benefit of having four bikes
Around.
in the system, yeah. And one sponsor could do more than one station.
Have we identified where those stations will be?
We have not finally identified them, you know, we would want you to approve that, but we're thinking that at, at two points on the bike trail, Laurel Park, and maybe two points in downtown, might be a good initial placement. Because we think people in downtown extending an evening, or using the bike trail, or using a, you know, particularly that park, Laurel Park, would be the highest chance of users. And depending on the success, we can proceed on. One thing I did say is that $11,000 cost to us per year doesn't count program revenues every time someone rents a bike. So it could actually be less than that.
And then repairs to the bikes?
It's, it's, it's part of the turnkey $1,800 a bike
Okay.
per year charge.
What they pay is gonna cover that too, as well.
Right. So.
Sounds good.
So you're not endorsing it just yet, we can see how the sponsorships go, but is that the type of sponsorship program you wanted to see?
I like it.
I think so.
That's all we need to know, we'll proceed to launch that, so you probably should be getting some feedback maybe by the end of the week on that. And once we get the slick business plan to send out, we'll send it to y'all too.
Okay.
Okay?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Stand adjourned.